Numbers up here, they don't paint a pretty picture. But our path and what we're doing in that building, we're doing things that the state doesn't recognize. Let's go ahead and let's look at student population, of course Caucasian, ninety-eight percent. ESL, we have four students and one percent African-American. ILPD, we're at six percent, twenty-four students. Sped population, forty-two and a half percent. Homeless, seven percent. I need to check that, I'm not sure that's correct, probably even higher. Chronic absenteeism, we're all facing it, a lot of issues. We can always point back to COVID, I'll hit that way. All right, some of our data, nice little picture we got. Okay, this is over the last three years. We are in blue on this one here for our school. You can see, we are not with the district. We're not there yet, we're working there. Sixth grade math as well. Our sixth grade, actually, we've got some new teachers in there. My sixth grade, if I could clone them, we would be an A school, level five. They're doing great, and we've made some changes in seventh, eighth grade, I'll go with that here in a second. So that's our sixth grade from last year. ELA math, Chris, did we just see this one? Seventh grade, kind of downward trend. I did switch some people out of seventh grade into eighth grade, moved some people around, trying to shake it up. We've already talked about seventh grade, they're a different breed. My mom was an intercity teacher, she told me, uh, seventh graders should be frozen. I believe it's the shots. There's our numbers there, as you can see, slight decline. Later, it's gonna paint a prettier picture. Eighth grade coming up. Eighth grade, we had a really, really tough eighth grade class last year. The high school probably about. And I'll get to the analysis and explain more. Go ahead, Chris. All right. Once again, our proficiencies, where we're at, science, social studies, sixth grade. Seventh grade, seventh grade's been a struggle. We haven't had a teacher in seventh grade science in probably a year and a half, just can't find it. We do have one now, but now we have the same missing piece in eighth grade. It is what it is. Any principal in here can tell you how hard it is to find teachers, let alone certified teachers nowadays. Eighth grade, once again, eighth grade killed us last year, it was tough. Sixth grade carried us. All right, Chris. Now, this is where the picture gets prettier. Okay, we wanna see blue, we see a lot of blue in our seventh grade special ed ELA students and our math. We're growing, we're getting better. Go ahead, Chris. Grade eight, look at that. I am so pumped. You'll see some more things here shortly.
Is that a fall winner this previous, the 2024?
Yes, sir, that's this year. That's where we're at, that's where we're going. Okay, this one right here. If you want to, I kind of direct my eyes this way, I get an angle. Those are the current kids. Okay, so our eighth graders in ELA, okay, last year, that's seventh graders, fourteen percent. This is what we're predicting right now. This is where we're at. When we look down here, it looks like we're cheating. I told the staff, they're gonna think we're cheating at some point. I just hope this stays true. I'm really pumped with our students and our teachers and the way we're going. Go ahead, Chris. This is another big one. April's been in that building, it's not easy. Our discipline numbers are falling. It's from our staff working hard, administration, the feet on the ground, and constantly just working. We have also revamped our in-school suspension. We've got a slide here later, we'll mention a little bit. But this is our numbers. For that, for us, that's great, and it's getting even better. Okay, go ahead, Chris. All right, key findings, okay, we rushed through all these earlier, they're in your handouts. They're not great, are they? Okay, chronically absent, we've got a lot of kids. Here's my theory on that. I might jump ahead, our root analysis. These are COVID kids. They had a sniffle when they were in first and second grade, guess what? They stayed home. That mentality has not changed, has it? Not really, okay? Of course, our T-BOSS was a level one, all right? Go ahead, Chris, we're just gonna fly through. Okay, I've hit some of this. We are currently, since COVID, most of our kids, I think it was eighty percent, it's up there somewhere, are two grade levels behind. Those same kids can't read, they're two grade levels behind, they can't read the question sometimes. So that's what we're fighting right now.
And those are your COVID kids as well?
Yes, ma'am.
If they go home during the spring.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, these kids were first, second, third grade, that's your foundation. That's putting that alphabet together to those words to make a sentence, so.
And where you learn to read, or where you learn to read and then you read to learn.
So we're gonna get there though, okay? Wise instructional content behind, kind of hit on that earlier, having to fill the gaps. Many students, trying to do that in the classroom, we've got some kids where they need to be, some still two, three years behind. All right, Chris, go ahead. Next steps, of course, we're doing this right now. We are doing our small groups, our bubble groups, kids we identified that can be proficient for us. They're just gonna need the little extra push. Allocate current common planning time and PLCs so teachers can engage in quality collaboration. We've already done that. We've identified, the teachers have sat down with the data, picked out those students that will take us that next step. And of course, monitoring, formative student data progress. All right, Chris. All right, current improvement strengths, sixth grade shows a fifty-nine percent growth around, uh, among our special ed students on iReady from fall to winter, seventh grade, fifty-seven percent growth among special education students. Math, seventy-one percent growth on the iReady from fall to winter, with special education students showing a growth of eighty-five percent. Sixty percent of all ELA and math RTI students are showing positive progress. Student chronic absenteeism improved from forty-six point nine percent to thirty-two point nine percent this past year. Is a continued area of focus for us this semester. And then the flu hits. But we've got some incentives for our kids, we're also working on some more, just trying to get them here, just trying to get them in the school. Goals this year, three to five percent increase. Okay, that's very low, but it's gonna be growth, it's gonna be better. I think we'll do even better than that. More of our improvement plan. Some of this I've already went over, just read over for your knowledge. All right, monitoring progress, we're still doing that between, we use our instructional coach, Dr. Meredith, myself, Dr. Marlon, of course, teachers. Okay, this is the part I love. This is how we're getting better. This is what the state does not measure us on, okay? We started in PTO this year, we have parents coming in. It's not a lot, but it's more than we had. They're doing great things, not just for our students, but our teachers, which makes them feel appreciated. LMS Fest, we've kind of done this in the past, we're doing the haunted hallway. Teachers have their little booths set up, you know, just getting people on campus. Leadership meeting, we meet once a month, if sometimes more. Theater arts, we have a great theater arts program, Mr. Miller's involved with that along with Ms. Hoskins. Wizard of Oz this year. We are in the process of adding an outdoor classroom, so if you drive by our school and you see a mess, sorry. We're just waiting for people to get work done, okay? We have a partnership with the Methodist Church, they're providing, they provided lunch during one of our in-services. We also went over there and hung out at our safe haven, so we would be aware of it. Let's see, what else we're going? The Women's Sunday School sponsored our living skills class with yearly snacks. And the Men's Sunday School is sponsoring our track team snacks for the year. We provided ten Thanksgiving meals. We support our angel tree. We provided seventy-four families at LMS with gifts. That's special to me, okay? With support from Second Harvest in the community, we serve about seventy-five bags of food each week. And then the aged and distressed families of Appalachian counties, Cedar Hill Baptist Church. And the Catholic Church, they help provide backpacks for our school supplies, nearly half our students. We have more goals next year, we're also trying to get a backpack for every kid. We're thinking about calling TCAT, maybe getting some haircuts for kids as a back-to-school celebration, just trying to get people in our building. We currently have AP honor rolls each nine weeks. They also get donuts with it, I'm big on donuts. iReady benchmark growth. September attendance awareness, we're also doing that throughout the year. School dances each nine weeks, grade-level field trips to extend the learning beyond the classroom. Couple of our examples of where we've been. Seventh grade, I think, is going to Biltmore Mansion too in May. Chris. More, I've mentioned that earlier, we are having the Wizard of Oz come out and see that. We have kindness club, Ms. Brock, we stole her from you, thank you. She has done awesome with that, just spreading kindness. Middle school needs some kindness. Beta Club, we started our first dance team this year. We haven't had one before. Now, Jaxxboro has one, now, LaFollette's got one. So I got some coaches, Chris, who might get paid one day. Dream it, do it, Ms. Chambers is always helping us out with that. Cheerleading team ran a food drop, collected food for the community. Sunshine Committee, these are staff members, these are small treats for each other. We're winners of the Good Sport Grants, thanks to Coach Hayes and Ms. Lambert, I think there's more on the next slide about that. Couple of collaborations between Intensive Department of Health and Vanderbilt U-Sports Center. Recognize U-Sports throughout Tennessee for Friday, the highest level of safety. Let me just tell you real quick, we are the only school in the county that has this award. Our coaches are certified level one. We're not winning a lot of games, we know what we're doing. And we're, once again, we're getting better than we were before. Did you switch slides?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I went to the level one.
Hey, yeah, go ahead, I mean, there's a lot of brags, you got papers, you get a word, go ahead and read somewhere. Go ahead, Chris. Okay, now, two thirty-day contracts, scratch that, that's been passed, don't worry about that. I would like you to consider maybe in the next year. Our school's growing in numbers. We're hired by, I think, forty or fifty kids this year. Our eighth grade class is leaving, it's very small, but the sixth grade class coming in is the same as our sixth grade class we have now. We're gonna have, instead of almost three ninety in the building, we're gonna be pushing four thirty, four forty. So right now, some of our classes are a little tight. Are we illegal? Yes. Would a smaller classroom size help us in ELA and math? Absolutely. And I don't know if you know this, we lost four teachers last year, and it really kind of cut our numbers down. We also lost seven people to retirement, so we brought in a whole bunch. Can be great, could be bad, we don't know yet. But this is something I tell the kids every day, be great, be better than yesterday. That's the mindset we have to have in that building. Y'all have any questions for me?
Piercey, I just wanna say what a great job I think you're doing.
Thank you.
I know that letter grades don't always tell the whole story. I feel like I'm at LaFollette Middle quite a bit, I'm proud of you guys. You all have a wonderful staff.
Yes.
Your sped department is incredible. You have some of, with Ms. Kidwell, Ms. Moses, some of the kindest, most hard-working folks at that school. I believe in LaFollette Middle, I'm proud of you guys. I'm really excited to see this letter grade change next year.
Thank you.
And I wholeheartedly believe that it is, because I know what wonderful things are happening there and the supports that you have in place. And you brought up, I was going to mention it, I didn't know you had suspensions in there. But the discipline rate at LaFollette Middle School has been exceptionally high over the last few years. Those students naturally feed into Campbell County High School, and we had a lot of issues a few years ago with those same students continuing the discipline issues when they got into high school. And when Mr. Piercey came into the role as principal, he had a lot to overcome and a lot of things to put in place. And change is not always well-accepted by people, especially when you're holding them accountable and they're having to go to the alternative school, suspensions, whatever it may be. But his discipline rate dropped so tremendously that it not only impacted LaFollette Middle School, but Campbell County High School as well. And then I had received this from Senator Jaeger for, because you helped getting your school under control, it took care of the entire county. And we were awarded in recognition to lowering school suspensions in Campbell County at such a great rate, so.
Lots of news, thank you. Any other questions?
How many do you feel like you lose a lot of students that go to Jaxxboro and they become a LaFollette?
I'm gonna worry about the ones that come through my door.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, I can't control that, I mean.
No, I know you can't.
LaFollette's my home, if you wanna come to it, come to our house. It really truly is. I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you.
If you want to hear what Mel's on before you go to the other area.
I'm April Melvin, in the school.
I rock, I do much of my stuff.
Pre-K through fifth grade. We actually have twenty-six percent students with disabilities. And last year, we administered ten ready to two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students, forty-six, which were students with disabilities. Our attendance, chronic absenteeism was twelve point three percent. There was eleven percent with students with disabilities. I have several things listed of factors impacting performance, I won't go over all of those. But the main thing, we do have a higher percentage of special ed. And what we found is that they were receiving a limited amount of tier-one instruction because inclusion classes had not been fully implemented. So that's something that we've been working on last year and this year. And this just kind of shows from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, there was an increase in chronic absenteeism. And this past year, it has dropped significantly. I feel like this is probably the best place to start to understand our data here. In fall of two thousand twenty-three, we were identified as an ATS high school. And that was because we had zero percent special ed that was proficient on the ten ready. And thankfully, it took us one year and we were able to exit that. We had fifteen percent that were proficient and thirty-three percent of students with disabilities that weren't approaching expectations. And this graph shows our achievement, it's broken down by grade level and subject. Our highest achievement was in fourth grade math and English, and also fifth grade math. And our ELA math total, we had thirty-six point three percent proficient. Which gave us our success rate. And our AMO was thirty-four point one, we surpassed that by two point three percent. And actually, that was the highest increase on success rate in the district. I think we were about seven tenths of a point away from a normal school. I was really mad about that, so. And the next few slides is just across the district, so I'm not gonna go over that. But in ELA, our highest achievement was in fourth grade with thirty-nine percent. And then our math, the highest grade level was fifth grade with forty-three percent. So achievement definitely has went up, and also in growth, this is gonna show some of the highest growth in the district. And our fourth grade received a level four in math. And then taking a closer look at T-BOSS in fourth grade ELA and fifth grade math, we had a level three. I already mentioned that fourth grade math was a level four. But two areas that we definitely need to work on and improve is science and ELA in the fifth grade. And overall, we were very proud and excited, we grew from a level one to a level three. We also moved from a D to a C on the school letter grade. And this is our strategic plan that we implemented last year. And I won't go into all of these, 'cause I'm sure you've read over them. But Gretchen had mentioned Bruce, and we collaborated with Bruce Billings. He helped us come up with an instructional planning cycle, and also sessions where we would analyze student work. That was very successful. We focused mostly on our K-two, the benchmark advanced curriculum, because we didn't feel like that there was enough wordwork, phonics in that curriculum. So that was very successful, and we actually had the privilege of doing a virtual meeting with some of the supervisors across East Tennessee region, and sharing our success with PLCs. A couple of things that we did add this year that we didn't have last year. We received seventy-five thousand in ATS iGrants, and we hired two part-time teachers. Had some that retired in there, with Mr. Piercey. So we hired Linda Friend and Janice Craig, and they're an excellent job. Absolutely excellent. A couple of other things that we've done, we are starting, we have done peer visits to help teachers just go in and help with classroom management and teaching strategies. Because we actually have probably, when you look at our staff, probably about forty-five percent of our teachers have three years or less. So we have a lot of new teachers. This is just kind of a breakdown of our iReady benchmark winter data. We have fifty-five percent meeting typical growth in reading, and fifty-eight percent meeting typical growth in math. I did an add a slide to show our projections, but in grades three through five, our winter benchmark was not as high as what we had hoped. We calculated it, and it looks like we're gonna have, need about twenty-five to twenty-six students to meet stretch growth to hit our AMO. Because our AMO, I think, was forty point one, it was, you know, it increases every year, so it was higher. Some of the goals that we've had this year, goal one and two was to improve ELA and math by having fifty percent or more meet their typical growth from fall to spring on iReady. And our goal to decrease chronic absenteeism from eleven percent to eight percent. Actually, that should be twelve point three percent, I think. And then students with disabilities, you know, we hit that fifteen percent mark, but we would like to be above that, so we'd like to increase that. Some of the celebrations and opportunities, I just listed a few. I don't know if you're familiar with the house system, but it's structured after Ron Clark Academy house system. And it promotes positive behavior. I think Jamie and Mr. Miller came down and kind of got to see that a little bit. We've implemented grade-level spotlight nights this year, where parents are invited to come out, see the projects students are working on. Some of the lower grades actually had activities for parents and students to do together. Positive office note referrals, that was something that Lindsay had recommended for her training, the leadership training they've been doing. And that's been really nice, because usually when we call, we're calling because their child's in trouble, or something's happened. And the last call I made, I told the parent how it was, and she was like, oh no, what did he do? And I said, no, this is a positive note, so that's good, we really like that. We've implemented an attendance incentive program. And then the next slide's just a couple of pictures showing, we did an ice cream celebration with face painting for pre-K through five, just to celebrate our growth and achievement. And then we did a baked potato bar for the staff. And then the last slide I have is just some support that we need. We are completely out of classroom space. We have two second-grade teachers sharing a classroom with thirty-two students. And we've turned one of our work rooms into a classroom for two sped teachers. They do have a few pull-up groups they bring in there, but they go out and do inclusion. And then, very excited that the CDC class is being added at Jaxxboro Elementary. That will help us tremendously, it might not be an immediate fix, but Mr. Nelson has thirty students at a time at certain times throughout the day. But overall, he said he would seat forty-one students throughout the day, and has about forty-three on his caseload. And that is K through five. So, you know, that's been a big concern. And then zoning, I feel like that would help with overpopulation like at our school, but then like at some of the other schools. I know if your numbers are low, I think that would help equal that. But those are just some things I think that would help support us. Do I have any questions, comments?
April, I'll say that Jake Nelson is a rock star. Everywhere I go, I hear people bragging about him. He is the most positively talked-about teacher in our community, I think, so kudos for your work. The students there love him, the parents love him, you're doing a wonderful job with your school, so thank you.
He is great, and I don't want to lose him, because I know he's overwhelmed some, you know, the more support we can give him, the better.
And that's my fear of fellow board members, is if we don't start addressing these student populations and figuring out a way to evenly distribute them more fairly, we're gonna lose great educators like Jake, who are gonna say, I'm just worked to death, I don't know what to do.
And he's actually job-invited. And I, I mean, I was amazed at just sitting down and going through it and I'm taking it with him. It's like he's got years of experience, he'll break that. He does an excellent job, he really does. Any more questions? Okay, I think no more questions.
Okay, and I want to say this, it is so nice to see the response when some teachers' names are mentioned. It just generates, you know, pride among the district, because we know what great reputations so many of their teachers have. And when we talk about new staff coming in, it's a lot of our former students, people who have been our excellent students, coming back into our school system. So I am so excited about what we're selling into the school system, and it's really going to pay off for us. Jake, do you wanna?
Too many boys. Good evening, hello everybody, I'm Jake, Jason Dodson. A lot of people know me as Jake Dodson. I guess that started when I was a little boy, I was getting bald, and my friends called me Jake, and just stuck my grandpa, so they called me that growing up. And he just stuck, and so they're like, why do they call you Jake? That just stuck with me growing up. So a lot of people know me as Jake. But I've been a principal at Valley View now for about twelve years. I'm kind of, I guess I'm getting old. So it's been a blessing, the blessing of my life, to watch my children and watch other children grow up at Valley View and have an impact on their life. We love our little school up there at the valley, and if you guys haven't had a chance to come and visit us, some of you newer board members, I encourage you to come up and visit with me, and I'll give you a tour, or any of you other administrators that are up that way. Just wanna say thank you to Ms. Fields and the central office staff, school board members, and our wonderful principals. Because we have, not good principals, but we have great principals. I've seen a lot come and go, and we have really good principals right now. Just wanna thank you all for giving us an opportunity to come in this evening and share our challenges and our successes, and, because we have a lot of both to talk about, so. Chris, we'll go ahead and get started, this is just our demographics. We're gonna talk a little bit about our assessments. I don't have a lot of slides, I think I have about fifteen slides, so we'll move through it pretty quick, because I know y'all don't wanna listen to me all night long, so go with me. Our student enrollment at Valley View is four hundred and sixty-one. I think twelve years ago, when I first started, it was about three oh five. So we've grown, and we're proud of that, we're low on space, we're running out of classrooms. We have thirty-two point one-one economically disadvantaged percentage on that. Our students with disabilities, seventeen point three, four-three percent, and that's third through fifth, that's easy to find. And then we have a small percentage of racial and ethnic groups at Valley View. Our attendance last year was a level four. We were below the district average and the state average at Valley View. So even though chronic attendance is, I would say, one of, if not the top concerns and challenges that we all face, we do a good job, I think, at Valley View with those relationships that we have with our parents, and it helps with that attendance, building those relationships. Discipline rate is also pretty low. It was two point five-four percent last year. This year, we're at point four-three. I suspended one student this year, and I suspended him twice. We only got one this year. So we only got one this year. Going back to attendance, this year, we have eighty, we've had, we've got about eighty students that's missed ten or more days this year. Did you know that of those eighty kids, or eighty, yeah, eighty students, how many of those students are truancy issues, attendance absences? One. Seventy-nine kids are missing because something's wrong with our attendance policy. We've got to figure out a fix for that, guys. And listen, I know kids get sick and we wanna give parents a chance to right parent hopes, but the state's looking at us. Every time that we have a kid that's got eighteen absences, it deens us. It, it goes against us, even if they're all excused. So we gotta look at that and figure out a path forward, because it's not really nothing we can do about it. Because we excuse, excuse, excuse. Doctors' offices are handing them out left and right. So we've got to work on that. Our, the next link I added was to our report card. If you wanna click, I know y'all have seen it. We are a C. Does it click?
It does, yes.
Okay. We are a C this year. We were a C last year.
Oh, it did. I'm sorry, it's on my screen.
It may be something I did wrong.
You didn't. I think it's treating it like two monitors, but.
That's okay. We, we are a C. We, we want to be a B or an A and we're gonna, we're working hard to get there. I don't know that the school report card accurately reflects the success of the school in all ways, but it's the game we have to play. And so I tell our teachers, look, we've got to do what we've got to do to play this game and play it the way that that's gonna reflect positively on our school. So we are striving to grow and we're doing all the things and we're going to discuss those as we move along. But we are a C, but being an old coach, I like to win, so I'm competitive. I wanna, I wanna beat Jaxbury and not a Carroll. That's my goal. So let's move on.
Jake, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
While he's doing that, talking about beating Jaxbury and Carroll, do you find the difference in student population makes it different, difficult for you all, not just like space-wise, like some of the other schools, but athletically? Because I just can't help but imagine a school with, you know, four hundred students versus a school with almost seven hundred students, for example.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a hugely different world when you expect them to compete against each other.
I think anytime you have a school with more population, it, it creates a challenge to compete with those folks. Just like you high school people see it with the Moorestown West or no bridges. I think anytime you have more kids at other schools, that's, and I don't know if I'm answering you the right way, but we do compete in other areas very well. And I think every school has its own identity in our county. And I think it's not good or bad, it's just different. Like, like our kids, our Country Valley kids, that we, we think of ourselves as Mayberry almost up there, and everybody's nice and everybody gets along. But it's just a different demographic. Then you get on down towards LaFollette and they have a different demographic. I think there's different challenges within that demographic. All the way down to Carroll and Jaxbury. And I think that, adjusting to those different profiles or stereotypes, all kids can learn, especially those special ed population. And I don't think we challenge them enough, so we've got to do better with that. But yeah, I think it's just different. This is our data tracker for Elgin. The data tracker that, I've been involved in the Elgin Principal Support Program. Not this year, this is the first year we've not really got to do it as much. It's been a game changer for me as a leader. I was with it for about six years. And Greg Wilson, he leads up that program and he worked with me personally. And we developed a, a data tracker. I don't know if some of the principals still use it, but I'm afraid for you to click on it. But you, I'll give you this slide and you can click and look at our data. But this data that we have, it's a, it's a program that, that you can, it compiles a list of database of our K through five students. And it's, it's got all the data right there at your fingertips and you can, you can see which kids are growing. It's got them ranked by percentiles, not, not so much their skill score, because a kid can go up a hundred points on a test. What does that mean? But if it goes up to the ninetieth percentile, then we all know that's good. So it's, it's, it's a unique, pretty cool, pretty cool tracker. And it's what, it's really what I use at my school to drive instruction, those reports I get from it. That's how we make instructional groupings.
I'm gonna ask, and this is probably a Jennifer question, a question for you.
Yeah.
Why are we not participating? Why is everyone not participating in Elgin?
Well, we did it for so long, we let them opt out if they wanted to. So we chose a smaller group, because we couldn't just let them, some go and some not. We let the newer principals go and then we let, is that the only ones that the newer ones do?
And I will add that I've done it so long that it became a little redundant with the things I was learning when I would go visit. Although I, I would welcome the opportunity to do it again.
So newer principals are.
They're still doing it, yes. And they actually just came back from the winter retreat. They do that. I mean, it is an absolutely fantastic partnership that we have.
Would it be something like, let's just, for instance, say Jake still wanted to participate in it. Could he do that? Or does everyone have to do it? Is it, I mean, I don't know.
Well, Elgin likes for the cohort to be the same. That's what they base their planning sessions around. So if it's been a newer set of principals, they focus on pretty much what the older would say, yes.
Here, you go to the next one.
Uh, this is just a quick screenshot that I took and posted up there. This is our I-ready benchmark scores from fall to winter. This is reading. And all I know is a lot of red is bad and a little red is good. And a, and a little green is, is bad and a lot of green is good. So this is fall. This is winter. Trust me, and I promise I do.
Chief. Comments in.
Yeah, it's good. So we go to the math. It's the same thing. We've got, we've had a lot of growth in, in math this, this, this semester, this year. And I think it's because it's a new program and I think that's why we struggled a little bit last year. We had a new math program, I-ready. Had a lot of teachers that didn't know the ins and outs of it. I certainly didn't know the ins and outs of it. And we're, we're getting better with it. And that pacing of that new program is critical, because you can be halfway through the year and if, if a new teacher's in there, they could've spent too much time to get to chapter ten, when another, another school that knows how to use it may be at sixteen or eighteen. And we've, we've experienced that. So you can go to the next one. This is our scores last year in, in relation to the district and the state. ELA thirty-two percent versus thirty-five forty-one, twenty-six to thirty-six forty-two, and twenty-nine to thirty-two forty-four. Not proud of that, so we're gonna do better. This is a trend data that I do. This is something that I've, I've charted. There's a link also here, but we won't go there, but it shows, it breaks it down by kindergarten, first grade, all the way down to fifth grade. But we just, I wanted to know what is, like, the, the kids, if the kids, this kind of relates to our Elgin tracker. These are the kids that have taken math tests and now they take I-ready tests, three benchmarks a year. If a kid is at the fiftieth percentile, that's the national average. They're on grade level. So I wanted to know how many kids in my building are on grade level. So in nineteen, pre-COVID, forty-two, this is the floor of our students, forty-two percent of our kids were on, in reading, were on grade, grade level, start of the year, school-wise, that's average of K five. Now, this winter, forty-six percent of our kids are on, at least on grade level or better. In the fall of nineteen, thirty-one percent of our kids were on grade level. And, and then now we're at forty-seven percent. So that's a good picture to show growth. That just means when a teacher gets a group of kids, I can tell that teacher, you started with a group of kids that are, half of your kids were on grade level when you started with them. So they can't blame, if it's a third grade teacher, they can't say, well, second grade didn't send me nothing. They didn't do nothing last year. So we wanted to track that to be able to see which, which cohorts and which grade levels were showing the most growth with what they have. Specific areas of concern, grade three math, we were seventeen percent last year. This is based off TCAT last year. Three through math, again, I-ready math, new curriculum. We, we had some struggles. We saw some decline there. Grade three science, one of the needs I think that we need for science is we don't have a diagnostic to test kids in science. We do for reading and math. We don't really get to monitor science in elementary school, because we don't have a diagnostic to see what our data is as the year goes along. So that's one of the needs I think we need. Our AMOs, these are our state minimum requirements with thirty-six point three percent of our students to be level three or four. Math, we want thirty point eight percent of our students to be on track or mastered. And then, and then science, we need thirty-three point one. And that's through grades three through five. If they hit those marks, then the state will say, you did a good job. We wanna go way above that, hopefully. And then specific areas of concern, based on our winter benchmark that we just did, is our fifth grade ELA was at sixteen percent, which was not good. And our first grade ELA was at eighteen point three percent, which was good. Again, context, they started with nine percent in fall. So even though they doubled to the winter benchmark, they were still behind. So we gotta keep working there. Fourth grade math growth from fall to winter is only thirty-four percent, when our school average is sixty percent for growth. So we've talked about that in our PLCs. Winter I-ready, grade two ELA in math have the highest proficiency scores in our building. And that's vital to our third grade retention law that's in place. We try to make sure that those, those kids are on track now when they get to third grade. Grade five math was also an area to celebrate with sixty-four percent, sixty-four percent of students showing growth and the number of students reaching proficiency grew from fourteen to thirty-one. So we see some good stuff happening in our building right now. We're excited about it in math, because that was a shortcoming last year. School-wide benchmark data from fall to winter is promising also. ELA went from twenty percent proficiency to thirty percent proficiency fall to winter. And then math, we went from thirty-seven percent proficiency to fifty-seven percent proficiency. Three-five ELA went from twenty percent students being proficient to twenty-seven percent. In math, we went from thirty-eight point nine to fifty-four point two. So we've got some good numbers coming out. We're excited. And I think we're gonna be good this year. These are some of the strong things about our school. We do have a strong climate, a strong culture. I think you, you have to have those relationships, but you also have to have accountability. And you love your teachers too much to see them fail, so you kinda gotta be in the rooms and hold them to the fire a little bit. And we, we try to do that in a good way. Strong culture, strong climates, teacher check-ins. We have PLCs. We believe in ensuring that our teachers and our supervisors do a great job with this, making sure we have high-quality instructional materials that we're teaching those standards that you other guys have talked about. We also have an RTI block every day where everybody in our building is getting intervention, whether they're high, whether they're low, whatever they need. For forty-five minutes, they're getting a small group opportunity. We have data-driven decision-making. We do some, a lot of planning prep, co-teaching. We do learning walks. I think we're about to begin. Every teacher has a SMART goal tracker. It's another link. They, they have to set goals at the beginning of the year and we monitor them with this. It's a, we share it with, everybody in the school has the same link to this, so they can see everyone else's goals. And so I want my teachers to all have goals, because if we don't have goals and we don't have a target to shoot at, we'll miss every time. So data teams, PLCs, this is how we monitor. A lot of formative assessments, a lot of weekly walkthroughs from me and my assistant principal. Community engagement, we have a huge fall carnival every year. It's a big success. We raise twenty thousand dollars usually a year with that. We have a big chocolate sale we're gonna raise start. We have, we did two fundraisers. We keep it simple. We make twenty thousand dollars on the carnival. We make ten, fifteen on the chocolate and that takes care of everything.
That doesn't sound very simple.
We have a very supportive community. I found that. I'm spoiled rock.
I will say, I wish for a fall carnival. You could give lessons on how to get a fall carnival. I hear them saying.
It's not me. It's the people.
An auction.
It, it's fine.
You have Jamie Ball, don't you?
Yeah, we have Jamie Ball too, so hopefully she'll move on to the middle school. PTO, Jamie Ball leads our PTO. I think they're, they're very supportive. We, we, we tend to use the PTO to purchase things that we can't purchase with school funds. So they're very instrumental in giving teachers the things they need that we can't sometimes get through this finance office or, or, or district office. So they play a vital role in what we do. We have a monthly newsletter. We have a Facebook page that we, my assistant principal is instrumental, Ms. Paul, she does. I am not as much of a Facebooker, but it's important that we tell our story, so, so parents don't tell it. So you all know what that's like. Classroom communication platforms, teachers use all these Dojos and remind apps and as long as they're communicating is, is what's important. Thank you all. Y'all have any questions?
Well, I've got a few, probably.
Okay.
It's only natural for a family member to speak, yes.
I'm proud of you. When I started this journey seven years ago, I had a goal as a board member and I spoke into the retreat and you know it firsthand, I want Valley View to be a rewards school. And they're working hard and we're gonna get there before I decide to walk away from this position. I might just have to stay on until I get, until we get it. But I'm proud of Valley View. It's home. I'm just, I'm proud of you. It's up there. We're working hard.
Well, we certainly appreciate your support. You've been instrumental in a lot of that. So has Ms. Fields. We have, and, and I'm sure I could pick up the phone and call any of you other guys. You guys would, would do whatever it took to help us. And it takes a village kind of thing. We all gotta be in it together and do what's right for our kids. We are blessed beyond reason for all of the school too. So we'll, we'll keep pushing till we get there.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Dodson, kinda, I can't get out of the habit of calling you Mr. Dodson.
I remember.
Yeah, lots of, lots of teachers, it's really weird serving with Jamie. Zoning, you know, we heard our friends at Carroll talk about zoning. I'm sure our friends at Jaxbury are gonna come and talk about zoning, I would imagine. What about your school? I mean, do you think that if we had some, and I hate using zoning, because that makes it sound very negative and very controlled. But if we had some stricter guidelines about, hey, if you live within X distance of a school, you know, you should probably attend there with some qualifiers.
Modified maybe.
Yeah.
I, I certainly believe in a, a form of modified zoning is essential.
Yeah.
I think moving forward, if we don't, we're gonna see, we're gonna see, we're gonna see athletic programs struggle at certain schools. They're not gonna be able to compete, because the latest greatest is at this school and now the parents want to be there, because somebody, there may be a travel coach that they all know. I mean, and in athletics is a big reason why we have so much of the transfers. The other reason I think is, is, is our PR. I think the PR affects your school. And I know you all have fought that for the last several years. And so we've got kids leaving our school and going to the Liberty. So they don't have to go maybe to the middle school. And I hate that, because I am a lifelong Al too. I, I love LaFollette Middle School. And I wanna say all of our kids go to LaFollette Middle School. So that's the way it's always been. So yes, to answer your question, I think we gotta look at it. I think we gotta study it and I know you guys will.
And, and I think you brought up a really good, the PR at our schools. I mean, when I was a student at LaFollette Middle School in two thousand and six, you know, it was, oh, that's a, a rough school or whatever, you know, it's, it's garbage. You know, Jaxbury Middle's a great school, LaFollette Middle's a great school. I mean, we're really, really blessed. And they both do, just like you were saying, have very different fields.
Yes.
But I'm really thankful for the education that I got us at LaFollette Middle from guys like you two.
Thank you.
But, you know, that's one thing that I think our school system as a whole needs to help with, help you guys with, is the, the PR, right? Making sure that we're sharing these good stories about our school and that way Robbie doesn't have to write nasty things about us, right?
Right.
We've, we've gotta continue to, to make that better. And so many of you all are doing such a great job on social media too, so thank you for that.
And, and as a principal, it's my, I feel like it's my responsibility to encourage as many of my kids to go to. I feel like it's a feeder school, LaFollette Middle School. Nothing against Jaxbury Middle School, great school too. But that's why these schools were built where they were built. I think it's important to follow that. Thank you all.
We'd rather have you. I will thank you. Mr. Pals.
Thank you, ma'am.
So the Brownies are gonna taxi. Ryan is our athletic director, assistant principal, and I am the instructional coach and the day. So I'm sorry he can't be here, because he does not. So I'm sorry he can't be here because he does not have his opportunities very often. That's how, that tells me he's from his neck. And while we're waiting, you know, I like to walk in late. You know, you know, I like to talk. Um, my daughter went to LaFolde Middle School. My first teaching daughter, Campbell County, was at LaFolde Middle School, and she went to Campbell County High School, and she's now a new teacher at the number-two high school in the state. And she's, I'm super proud of that. She had great teachers at both places that influenced her and her journey. So yeah. And then I called at Jacksboro. Jamie was my principal for a long time. And I think I followed her to the high school. I jumped in the backseat and went with her. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. Um, I think that, yeah, okay. We'll start with our demographics. Uh, currently, we're just under twelve hundred students. Uh, two hundred and nineteen students with disabilities. Just like everybody else in the county, we have a high number of economically disadvantaged students, a high number of free and reduced lunch. Uh, we have seventy-seven teachers at our school, so that's a lot of people, a lot of personalities for the admin to manage. We're going to skip that slide because that's just a lot of data. But we will take a moment to look at our heat map, and I like that Gretchen also included that in hers. Um, let me see if I can find it appear real quick. One of the things that, we're going to echo what everybody else has been saying, attendance is, is a killer. Um, our chronic absenteeism at the high school was at one point, I think two years ago, at thirty-eight percent, and it is down to thirty, so we feel like we're making progress. It's hard to account for that when you look at elementary numbers sometimes, they're so low, but once students start driving, their parents don't always know that they're not going to stay. Uh, once they turn eighteen, you can't make them. There's nothing that we can do. Um, and we've been looking a lot at some hardcore, um, attendance numbers with students and...
Yeah, I've got, uh, I mean, our junior counselor, Courtney Vincent, she, I mean, she's already running into that. Two this week, they're eighteen, and we don't know if they're going to show back, you know, they're going to grace the door again, so it's just a, it's a, you know, Troy does a great job. Ms. Rollins is in charge of that. He's been on that for the last several years, and it's, you know, we can go back to COVID or whatever. I've been, you know, I've been there a long time. I think, looking around the room, I think I've dealt with either Brandon as a student or ten or twelve of you, Ashley was a student, I mean, so, uh, you know, uh, many of your, don't say grandkids, I don't think I've had anybody's grandkids, so.
I have.
And I'm not, and I'm not going to go that far, so. Uh, but I mean, I think before COVID, it was getting better. You know, Jamie was there then, you know, and since then, you know, I think everybody can attest to that issue with that.
Anyway, that is something we're still trying to focus on and track those kids down. Uh, that also had kind of an impact on our graduation rate. We were all really excited this year, pretty confident that we were going to come out this year with a B, a letter grade of a B, and we ended up with a D. Uh, and a lot of that goes to our graduation rate. Um, we had students who left Campbell County High School who said that they were going to go to Penn Foster or some other academy, and they just kind of got lost somewhere.
I think that, I think we got that with the cohort group, and Dame, Mr. Sex has been on that with, with Ben, is just, we're realizing there's such a, a, a number of those that have fallen through the cracks somewhere. You know, they didn't ever row anywhere, or we didn't ever know, we've just, we've taken the hit on that number.
Yeah, so that's something that we, I know the admin team's really worked hard on. They need probably weekly tracking some of these kids down.
Sandy Wilson tries to locate them. When they disappear, and we think we draw them from the system, we just.
Right. We are, and sadly, that's, uh, that's something we have to.
And how many students do you think you have going online like Penn Foster?
I, I don't know. Do you know those numbers?
Well, that eleven seventy-six number is really about eleven twenty-eight. You know, I mean, I mean, really, though, if you look at the number in Aspen, we're, we're lower than that. But I mean, it's just, you know, we've had, I mean, just couples since Christmas already.
Well, and something else, thinking about that, Jamie, um, because I saw a student this year that has come back to Campbell County High School as a junior. She left freshman year right before testing, and I noticed because she was in my class, and she went to Penn Foster. And I don't know if you all know much about that program and how it works, but you can get a high school diploma in seventeen months. And their math that they require for graduate, for diploma, doesn't go beyond really eighth grade math. So it's a pretty easy fix for a kid who wants to just stay at home, but then when they come back into the school system, they haven't learned anything, and we take that hit too. But yeah, we'll, you know, I'll talk a lot about it. All right, go ahead, sorry. Uh, this is something that we also get scored on at the high school level and call the ready graduate. So students, um, how, what are, we have a goal for that number every year?
Uh, I think it went to, I mean, I think Ben said somewhere around forty, which I think that gets you the, on the heat map will be high.
Okay.
But that's been his goal.
Right.
And so I think this year is finally where we're at.
Right, so it actually goes, is a year behind. So like for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, um, school year, the data from last year, the ready graduate data was the year prior to that. So it flags that you're behind on that accountability. Uh, but for students to re, to reach that goal, we have to have a twenty-one or higher on their ACT that will automatically get them ready to graduate. Um, and I know this year we had probably a record number of kids that are seniors this year that have a twenty-one or higher.
Right, it's, you know, we've got a good-looking spreadsheet if you want to see it.
Yeah.
It's madness when you get used to it, but we've, we've, everybody's been working on it, and so it's, uh, and like I said, we've, and Monica did a great job just kind of just two weeks ago on something with our honoring those kids. Yeah, those kids, we found out, we were, we were in, we were in a gray area, didn't know if one thing counted, and it did, and it bounces even more. You take the kids that are going to achieve that here in the spring, and we're looking about to be right around that fifty-five percent mark.
Yeah, because she found a few that hadn't been flagged yet that had taken a class that we didn't know counted. Uh, but there is, there are multiple ways to achieve that status. The EXOs, complete four EXOs, that's the early most secondary opportunities. That includes dual credit, statewide dual credit, which we did try with U.S. history. I don't recognize it. It was not, it was not good. Nobody understood what was going on. Uh, but we do have rural state here, Tellis City, um, for dual enrollment, TCAT. Uh, they can also earn industry credentials, which we're going to talk about that in our celebration because that number has gone. Thank you, Ms. Japers. Um, so yeah, there. And then we have our AP opportunities as well. We're good. Um, some of our strengths, and this goes back to that first spreadsheet that was way too much for anybody to look at. Uh, so where we see to be making some positive trends is in biology. We've got a three-year growth trend growing there. Um, this is some of our most recent benchmark data. We just really started benchmarking with the eligibility this year. We kind of started last year, and that, it was kind of like, I think Mr. Johnson was saying, nobody really knew what we were doing. But we're getting better at that, so we're doing the benchmarking now. So looking at their projected proficiencies, we should, we're right, right on target to hit our AMO. Geometry, that has historically been a number that's been really low. Again, they are trending up. We had a really good teacher a couple of years ago, Amy Glantingham. She was phenomenal. But we stole a teacher from LaFolde, I'm sorry. And he's doing a fantastic job. So we've got two really strong teachers in that department, and they're working together, planning together, facing together and all that, uh, which has been helpful while he's been out. And then the same with U.S. history. We've got, um, three really good teachers in that department that are co-planning, using common formative assessments and their benchmark data. So we actually got a call from Master Connect the first time that we did benchmarks. They wanted to know if they were cheating down there because their benchmark was so high.
And it's been something, like you said, we try to implement, and through Canvas and Master Connect, it's really going bad. I think they're coming, March fifth on our, to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. They'll work on that with teachers. We're ready. Uh, areas for improvement, this is where we do see our greatest need is in English two. That's what counts for the high school literacy, um, score. Um, so here we see some benchmarking, our projected proficiencies. Our English one is doing pretty well, uh, based on benchmarking. Uh, they should hopefully hit their, uh, double AMO, which is where we are. English two, we're still trying to figure out why we go down in English two, because it's, those standards are kind of linked together. I think that's, if I'm still correct on that. English nine and ten are still the same, but for some reason, there's a dip there. Um, we're not really sure why, but we're working on it. Um, if you look at the math, the math from the state underwent some leveling or restructuring on how the tests were scored, so we went for almost a whole year with no math data. So it's kind of hard to, to know how they're going to score you when nobody tells you. So we thought the numbers would be higher than they were. But again, we see that trending up hopefully, and that's what we're going to continue to focus on.
And I'll go along with that. I think some of you mentioned it earlier. I, I gave a test last year, algebra two. Sit in that class, kids took their time, took their time. They get to the last part, the subpart three, they blew through it in five minutes. I thought, well, you know, dang, they did great. Well, my son was taking a deep run. I talked to him later in the day, and he said, well, I took almost all the time to do it. You know, so he took forty, forty-five minutes, they took five minutes. Okay, and so, I mean, that's, you know, Amanda's tried to do a way to track that. We, we put notes and teachers, you know, and so that's something that, you know, we're just trying to find a way to combat that. I think that was mentioned earlier.
Well, they don't, they get to a certain age and they don't see the value in that test. Um, to them, it's just another test, and if they, you know, if they show up that day and they're not feeling it, they're not, they're just not going to do it.
Well, and it's something I was talking to Chris about earlier. I guess, I guess it was Peter. We're talking about looking at, uh, the state is looking at substitutions for opportunities.
Ah.
And you're doing integrated math.
Okay.
And I've got a whole list of substitutions they'll do or whatever, but that's something, and they think, oh, it's just, algebra two is just a subject that all kids don't mention.
Well, it's hard, and it's even hard to get teachers that are certified to teach it. This is the first year in a long time we've had more than one math teacher who's certified to teach it, because it used to be just for Officer Copland was it, and he was, you know, he was overloaded, but yeah.
We've had some, uh, teachers who had a degree in math. They take the practice, but they can't pass the, the algebra two.
Yeah, it's terrible.
And integrated math, you know, that might be something, at least some work to get in, fit into the hospital.
Right.
Might be something to look at.
Let me look at that monitoring stuff first, David. I'm sorry I skipped over that. Not sidetracked. Uh, so yes, we are still using Master Connect, and that is, uh, that data's available to teachers, and then we try to follow a, a benchmarking session with a PLC, so they have that data to sit and look at. And again, I think that, um, the algebra one teachers have done a really outstanding job collaborating, looking at their data together. U.S. history, they go over it with a fine-toothed comb. Um, and really, they're using Master Connect for common formative assessments as well, so that's been helpful. Uh, so we want to continue doing that. Um, oh, goals for improvement. Oh, this is all, sorry, I was about to miss everything. I was missing part of it, I'm so sorry. Uh, yeah. PLCs, looking at data, we're going to try to get better at that. There's so much data, and, you know, a teacher doesn't have one student for a whole year. They've got it for one semester. This semester is already ten days short. So that's two weeks of instructional time that those teachers are missing, so we've got to maximize that as well somehow. Again, still continuing to focus on the ready graduate numbers. Tracy, I've been involved in some of her CTE stuff this year. She issued a directive and said this is what we're going to do, and I think they've exceeded your expectations. Those teachers have done a great job. They're also, the CTE department is also working to integrate more math and ELA activities into their content, so we're, we're continuing to work on that as a, as a school as well. Uh, and then just to continue to monitor that attendance for individual students, calling home, but that, that's probably our number one problem.
It is, you know, Ben's trying, I mean, it's, once a week, we get a discussion, find ways, just try to combat that, you know, and, and just like, besides giving the car, you know, you know, whatever you can do there. But you know, I, I mean, there's probably nobody in this room that missed a lot of school when they were high school or middle school, elementary school. Okay, so I mean, it's just something that, you know, I always said it when my kids would go to the Jacksboro Elementary. You pull up, you, you know, you pull up on every, you know, most days, we got there about the same time. Friday, you pull up, and I went straight to the, and teachers, I mean, they were, people miss on Fridays, you know, what's all the tests in elementary school, they're on Fridays, you know, all that stuff, and I think it starts early, which I'm not saying that's an excuse, because I, I mean, I mean, nothing, Gail and Campbell Brown, they never let me miss, so. Uh, so, but you know, just, you know, we're trying to figure ways, and we'll, we'll wring that sponge as much as we can.
Well, and if, and when you're in a class that's only one semester long, you know, if you miss a day, that's like missing two days of instruction. And then you miss ten days in a semester, and then you've got a kid that's still going to miss twenty days this semester. So like this, you just can't repeat that.
Right, like, you know, Jason, you made a great point about that, and you know, the excuse absence or whatever, the state don't care. You know, you know.
And homebound students, we don't have that many, but we have several, and they still have to take EOC students at, uh, now they'll have to take those, and those kids do not perform well, because they already don't care.
Correct.
And homebound kids, you know, they're not necessarily getting all the support they need. That's limited support that we have to give them. Oh, let's see, okay, here's, um, some root cause analysis that Mr. Faust and the other administrators worked through. We have not been very consistent using school data. I just Google scare that, but I'll just be honest. And it, it's now my best friend. I look at it all day, every day. Um, and some teachers feel uncomfortable, and at the high school, there's so much data, and I don't know about the principals, you know, but there's a lot of different places you have to go to find everything you need. You know, you have to go to T-Boss, you have to go to that, um, educator reports, the TN Pearson site, we have to go to the ACT website. We've got benchmarkers, there's a lot out there, and it's hard for teachers to even have the time to get all that. So just making sure we make that easier for teachers and give them more opportunities to look at that data. So yeah, continuing to use Ma, uh, Master Connect to do that. Um, time gaps in foundational skills, and again, you all were talking about COVID kids that miss out on reading, same thing is still kind of trickled down. I hope we're about through with that. And I think too, it's not mentioned there, it's just different when they get to high school, when they leave middle school, and they get up there with, you know, a thousand other kids, it's easy to get lost in the crowd. It really is. So we try to encourage kids to join clubs. We have so many clubs to, to offer lots of sports, great band programs, so trying to get them involved does help, I think so. Um, attendance, try to keep, stay on track with attendance. What can we do? I can't buy them a card. Sometimes now, we have got some incentive programs, kids that have good attendance get free tickets to ball games, and there are kids who look real forward to getting that little surprise from Mr. Arnold, you know, once every night leaks. Again, continuing to support teachers with professional development. We also have a lot of new teachers at the high school. Probably quite a bit of turnover in the last few years with people retiring, people, some people just getting out of education together for various reasons. And this is the first time in a long time, I think, we've actually had a full staff, a full math department and a full English department. So I think that's going to show some good dividends too, that we have to support those new teachers. Okay, so we can talk about college one rates, but we'll talk about this. Many of you know Monica Dane. She was our Garrett coordinator for eight years. We've had Garrett for what, twelve years? Because I know, or is it longer than that? Jamie, do you remember? Or are you in Garrett?
Two years.
We got really lucky to keep this long as we did. But that grant finally ran out, but we now have the Ayers Foundation, which works with our high school kids. But our graduation rates continued, our college board rates continue to go up at a time when everybody else is across the state where they went down. So that speaks a lot to the staff at the high school, support staff, counselors, the extended grant, again, with Ayers. All those different people have really worked together to keep that, to keep that number up. So hopefully that trend will continue going forward. CTE credentials. Tracy's like, I want everybody to have them. So you can see last year, and you can see all the different credentials that there are. These are things that really make kids employable. They can put this on their resume when they go out to get a job. Somebody wants to go to work in a daycare and they are infant and child CPR certified? That's going to help that kid get a job. So as of December, this number's gone up now. We had nine hundred and seventy-eight industry credentials.
It's over a thousand.
It's over a thousand now. And listen, those CTE teachers, it's like a competition. How many kids can we get certified? So they have to kind of do some of this work on their own, the students do. But we, that's another thing I feel like we've done a really good job of at the high school, is celebrating those students when they get those. Sometimes these are kids who never get recognized for anything else, but hey, they're certified in that, what's that one for welding? Yeah, there's something for welding. Yeah. Just, and there's, there are more. It's crazy. Who knew? So yeah, I feel like that's really going to help overall with a lot of good numbers. You know, and he's my baby. That's my jam. I still serve as the AP coordinator at the high school, so that's something that we've really grown. We've tripled the enrollment in our advanced placement classes. And where this has really turned out to be a huge benefit, that a lot of students that don't have a car, that can't leave campus to go to Run State or to go to TCAT, but have college aspirations. This is a program on campus that is very rigorous, and they can earn some college credit. And it looks really good on a transcript when they apply to colleges. Our students continue to score very high. Lisa, I don't know Lisa Copeland. She's kind of a legend in Campbell County. She now teaches four different AP classes. That's why we get to have that Capstone program. Students that are in the Capstone program have an opportunity to earn a special diploma from the state. So it's, it's pretty prestigious to have that. So yeah, we're pretty pumped about that. Through some of our good use of our Title I money and some budgeting, we're able to pay for those exams. Kids don't have to pay for them. And they're about a hundred dollars a piece, so we remove that financial barrier. And Mr. Faust isn't here, but Mr. Brown and I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
If we don't know, we'll make it up.
I don't, we didn't have anything up there about our discipline, but I think we can agree, even though I saw you had somebody in the office.
This way is for the trial.
But overall, I mean, I know our discipline numbers are way down.
It is. It is. You know, and it's just, you know, and you can bat that, I mean, y'all can bat that different ways. So I mean, that's, that's, I mean, me and a young man had a story, you know, we had a conversation that, you know. Instead, I said, you know, be in class and learn, and obviously you're dealing with this. I said, you know, that, I said, we've got other things to do besides you just concentrating on mischief, you know, and it just like, I mean, little things. You talk about the, you know, the AP and the industry certs, I mean, it's, the ready graduate number's growing, the TESA ready graduate, you know, we're dipping into that, trying to understand that more. And, and because that has a lot of funding issues, but, but I think those numbers are coming down on the, on the discipline part. We're just trying to, and it, and it's not sweeping it under the rug. I mean, it's covering it. I mean, just we're not changing the rules. You know, so we're, they're just, they're acting a little bit better.
There's so many wonderful things going on, and it's, it's really disappointing though that ELA and math are the determining factor. And we call it other great things that are going on.
And I mean, and we're not, you know, we're not the bottom of the barrel. It's just, to me, it's misleading information. But I mean, we have kids taking AP macroeconomics. One kid, but she's making an A. She does it online. So, you know, we have so many opportunities. And you know, when people want to talk about school choice and whatever, we have, we're truly a comprehensive high school. They can become a cosmetologist. We've got kids that go off and are great welders. We have kids who go to college, who go to med school, who go to law school. Kids that go straight to the workforce. So there's something there for everybody if they'll come to school. That's the big thing. They just got to be there. But we do have a great staff, a good admin team. We have the Ayers Foundation. We have our counseling department. I feel like we have a good coaching staff as far as our athletic programs are concerned.
Ms. Branning, I just really want to commend you guys because these AP programs, I was an AP student, not a very good one, but I was an AP student. And these are the things that differentiate those students once they get to college, right? What, what I learned in your AP history class, the way to take notes, the way to compile things, prepared me for so many things in college. So kudos to the high school for really investing in that, and the trades as well. I see it because I'm hiring kids right out of those programs in my business. So kudos to you all. Do you have one question? Ryan has AD. We've got this whole thing, the board never even really discussed it about our districting. School numbers, I know that you and Miss Loverini went and tried to appeal that and things didn't work out. Is there anything from a board perspective that we can do to try to help that? I know I hear conversations in the community about coding and, you know.
Well, I mean, like the districting part, I don't think that's a big issue. You know, I mean, I think, you know, us and Jolico are so separated there. I mean, but I mean, you know, go towards AC, towards Gap, towards all that, I don't know. I mean, people are going to get to the, I don't think you're going to get into like a coach pay thing. You're not talking about like that.
No, 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 no. Let me refine my question. I'm sorry. We're talking about the divisions that we're in for like football and basketball.
I mean.
Exactly.
Right.
Because that has to do with the student population.
Because that has to do with student population and.
And it does, you know, and I just, you know, we had the discussion about, I mean, we had, I think at one point, sixty kids on our row last year that were at Ella. And I know there's so many checkmarks you've got to make Ella a school, that's almost impossible for y'all to do. You know, as a board, as a director, I mean, there's a lot of things you'd have to do for that. I think, you know, some of that's maybe that cohort, the cohort group, you know, if they get them off our list, maybe that's good. But I think you better start looking now because those numbers are going to be around next year.
How many students are at Ella?
Now?
Yeah.
I feel like that spreadsheet they sent the other day had at least ten to twelve per grade level. And not to be, not to be a Johnny Rainclap, but we sent four or five this week.
I think there are ninety-four total students, not all of them.
Would that, what would the, like, if you made that a separate school, it's a separate school?
Didn't y'all just miss by like twenty-something kids?
We were twenty-something away. And I'll say this, I think.
I mean, if that puts you in a separate picture.
Four of the five schools that were below us, if I looked at it right, each of those districts have an alternative school that draws that number. It goes on that alternative school comes off there. High school enrollment.
Yeah, so they could have their own school.
But just, you took off that right after we dropped down, then we would be, you know, we would be in, with Anderson County, I think Gap, Scott County, some of those.
As AD, I assume you would say that would be hugely important for our athletic program.
I think as a whole, I mean, like this year, I mean, you should take, because I mean, obviously, my son, boys basketball, all right? You know, they're, they're, you know, they win against Halls next week, they're a third to five. It's just been more competitive. AC, Clint will be fighting at one, two, or three. We beat Clint two times. Okay? So, I mean, but I also had that conversation with another teacher. You go back two or three years ago, John was in school. You know, if we would have been down to three A, we'd beat two schools that were in the region that went to the substate. You know, you know, Will was in that group. So I mean, you, it's just that, you know, it's no difference between everybody's, if you go back to the academic part. We've got just as good a kids as everybody else.
Exactly.
We're just, they've got a little bit more than us, you know? And I'm not, and I believe you, I, I, I don't, don't think I'm hating on the kids that struggle. I just believe you. I've been in education a long time, so I am definitely not, okay? But I think, you know, and once again, you've got kids moving off, whatever. And I used to fuss at that. I went to middle school with Chad Pennington. Chad moved off the web. We all hated it. But I, I get to that point where you say, it's hard to fuss at a, at a parent for doing what they think's right for their kid. But also, you know how many people have come to talk to me about moving their kid to a different school? Zero. You know, I've been in it a long time. I've been blessed. My brother was, I mean, my brother went to middle. I went to tech. I had a nephew who went to Memphis. I've had two nephews play baseball in college. I've got a daughter and a hope I got a son. We, not that we know everything, but we know a lot of the rap. But once again, I don't want to be lumped into just the athletic part. It's the academic part we're all going to look at in the long run, right? I mean, so, I mean, you can ask both my kids. I mean, I, I mean, I talk as much academic as I do athletic.
And they don't take academic.
And so they took academic, so I can brag on it. But, you know, and, but going back to that part, I, I just think there's, it would make us across the board competitive. Once again, Marty McCawson coached the same two or three years ago as he does today, and he's in the last year. You know, when they went two straight years and didn't win a district game, he's the same coach. So when you drop down a level, it means a lot. And so, you know, David played a couple of years ago. He's part of that group. I mean, I mean, those kids, you know, and it's, they hear that stuff, you know, you didn't win a district game. Well, if you have fifty less kids in your school, you might have won three or four. You might have won a district championship. And part of that might just be just finding the numbers right. Like I said, the cohort group, something like that. So, you know, we're finding more, I mean, it's, it's a rock I've never looked in, you know, looked under much, but we're trying to find it more and more. Thank you.
So our graduation rate for twenty-three was eighty-five point nine. Twenty-two, you know, it's eighty-six. Twenty-one, ninety-one, twenty-twenty, ninety-four. What's contributing to that decline?
Well, I think part of it has to do with what they call a graduation. I know when we get, you know, exchange students, foreign exchange students that come in here as seniors, if they walk at graduation, they get a Tennessee diploma that they didn't actually meet all the criteria to be considered a Tennessee graduate. That counts against us.
How many do we have?
We usually have around ten or eleven.
I feel like it's eight to ten, twelve somewhere. And once again, those same kids, they count against starting enrollment numbers. They count against ready graduate, I believe, you know, and all this.
So the foreign exchange students that are seniors, they're graduating.
They count against us because they didn't choose, they didn't take the math that was required. They didn't take the ELA that was required. Does that make sense? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Because I'm thinking, because when they're coming, because when they're coming to a foreign exchange, we get transcripts.
We have been trying to help Barack, you know, Barack. Barack Baskar, brilliant young student. Wants to go to college in the United States one day. He's taken as many advanced classes as he can. He's already graduated from high school in Turkey. But he, if you look at his transcript, he put physics in there. You know, we offer one year of physics at Campbell County Hospital. So his transcript just looks, we've all tried to look at it to help him.
So there's no way to substitute, like, where he's taken all those.
No, because our courses are just so, everything they require is just so different. Sometimes it will work, but typically it doesn't. And I didn't know that. That's something we've just learned in the last little bit. And then, remember how it used to be in math for special ed students, they had to take, when they didn't algebra? And then algebra. Well, now we can't do that anymore. The state changed that requirement. They all have to take geometry. They all have to take chemistry. So they don't take those for whatever reason. That can impact it. And then having those students that were, that withdrew but didn't officially withdraw, does that make sense, Mr. Miller? Because there was, I think, twenty-six kids on that list last year that we found that were still listed on our cohort group that, that were not actually there. We're figuring it all out.
So if, and we were talking to Mr. St. John at Jolico the other night about this, and I'm still kind of confused by it, but I'm trying to learn. But if us taking foreign exchange students that are in their senior year and would graduate with us is hurting our numbers, can we not just restrict where we just don't take senior?
Maybe.
I mean, if that's going to help our graduation rate.
Maybe. I mean, that would be a conversation for, you know, other people besides me. And, you know, and Kelly does a great job with that program. And the kids are great. We enjoy having those kids at our high school. I feel like it's beneficial in other ways. So I don't know how we can work that. That's beyond my.
How many seniors do you normally take at our foreign, because a lot of the juniors.
This year, we've got quite a few this year. One of them's having to leave early because he's from Germany and they told him if he didn't come back and take so many classes, that he'd have to repeat a year. So it was like, he's out.
I think the last year was at high school, maybe the next, we had, I think, twenty-two foreign exchange.
We had a bunch.
When you were there.
Oh, yeah, we, we had.
What was your graduation rate?
I think it was, it was twenty-twenty-one.
But Jamie, you're talking about, at the whole school, you had twenty-two?
Yeah.
Not just in the senior classes?
But we usually end up with quite a few, yeah.
But even if it makes a one percentage difference, you know, I'm all for foreign exchange students. Let's keep them in our schools. I think they add a ton. You know, I met a lifelong friend that was a senior foreign exchange student. But if we can restructure it, or just, hey, if you're a senior, we just.
See, I'm trying to process this because I don't have, I don't have, like, why, because I know, like, the senior counselor, like, when they graduate, she goes in and I know she kind of like, you know, graduated special ed diploma.
Right.
Drop out. And I hope it like that. So what happens from there for where they're not counted on your?
Well, and I, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is my people understanding. Again, I'm not a principal. But just in discussions with the whole admin team and with everybody involved, it was like there was a shift in the rules from the state of Tennessee. Am I wrong? Am I wrong in saying that?
Okay.
There, there was. And I'm.
It's just like, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, because we, we were still operated under, I think, that assumption that, that as long as a special ed student had Algebra I and Algebra II, they were good to go because they could do A and B.
Because they did Algebra I, Algebra B, Alge- geometry A, geometry B. They can't do that.
Can't do that anymore.
And just, like I said, just a little here, a little there, I mean, in those different reasons. And I don't know, I just felt like the last several years that most of them have been seniors. And I don't know, and going back to the whole thing, I don't know since the whole COVID thing with the kids going homeschool. And I don't know if that has a ripple effect. And like I said, Daniel, finding more and more on that cohort group. I mean, we had a young lady pass away that was in our system, but she was on our cohort group five years, you know, I think it was several years where she was supposed to graduate. And also we found it.
It counts against you.
You know, now you have to, and I think you have to go through a lot of legal work to get, to get that off there maybe, so.
Well, and I, again, looking at data, we've been trying to kind of figure out some things using school data to see if it tells a story. But it's never just the data. Like you said, there's always another story that goes along with that data. And I already forgot my hand.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the foreign exchange has been a hot topic both, both evenings. And these students, I don't know, but it seems that they're under the custodial guardians of somebody that may live right here in Campbell County. So we're legally obligated to take them because they've got to go to school somewhere.
Right.
So we can't say, sorry, we don't want you, because this is him or they live here, you know? But that's an average house.
Okay. I'd like to say that because you're talking about. And I'll say this, and then I'll. Looking at data, looking at attendance, especially kids that are over the age of eighteen, there's a student right now who was a pretty bright young man, but he hasn't been to school since he turned eighteen, that he hasn't officially been enrolled. And he's not doing any work. So what do you do with that kid? So that's, and then there's more than just that one. That's the one that sticks out in my mind because I remember him as a freshman. I also want to give a shout out to middle school principals for sharing their A grade data. Because that has really helped us identify students before they ever enroll as, who needs to be in an official class? Who's really interested in pursuing some AP classes? Who's going to need extra support? So that has been, there's more of a conversation, I think, now between high school and middle schools. It's been really helpful.
And I was thinking, I can add with that, it's like that middle school exploration test they started. And I think that'll help a lot. We're getting that, you know, set up, Sarah's helping us get that set up in Aspen so the counselors will know that. And I think we'll try to work on getting some things related to Ag for, for, for Dylan Roman. That'll help our numbers there. So, and, you know, if only there are two and three, and that's going to start being Dylan Roman. So there's a lot of things that are helping for the middle schools, so we appreciate that.
Thanks, guys.
All right, guys. I guess Miss Phil's decided to save the best to the second to last. Do it that way. That's all right. Mix it up a little bit. But I want to thank Mr. Chairman and other board members for taking time out of their schedule to come and, you know, give us an opportunity to kind of show our, our schools and what we've got going on. So let's talk about the following elementary a little bit. School demographics breakdown. We've got about four hundred fifty-five, which that number's rose since Christmas, because we've had twenty registers since we've come back from Christmas break. So it's at four, it's going to be three, I think, actually now. So that's when, you see our, our breakdown here will get more. By grade, as we go down for you, pretty much kind of close all the way. We do have a smaller group than the fourth grade up and down there that sticks out. Again, more homelessness, which that number could go up because many of those twenty are actually, will qualify for that, that we have registered. And as we go back to make sure everything's coded correctly. Students with disabilities, I believe twenty-six percent of the students that will fall to elementary are filed in that category. I mean, you see, that's, that's no small piece of the pie. ASL, it's at four percent. That's rising. That's rose. It's last year. And it's going to, it's going to continue, I think, for everybody around. Our current captain, he kept appearing that, following entry has the last year high. We're trending close to that, a little less than, than last year, but barely. And we know if the kids aren't there in their seats, no matter what the reason is, doesn't matter why they're at it. They're not given seats in front. at, they're not given seats in front of the teacher, they're not learning. Some factors that could impact that performance, of course, it mentions tends again, impact it can have, mentioned one of these, but I'll briefly highlight some of them. Of course, it's going to have behavior aspects, we have a first grader that missed a whole week of school, comes back and I'm having to drag him back into school, you know, that type of thing quite a bit, so that really has a big impact. Pre-K factor, they go to pre-K, are they going to take advantage of that, do they have transportation for that? Going into kindergarten, make them ready, because I know previous school, those twenty kids that went, they were ready, and I'm looking like the ones that, these forty or so that we have at Fall Elementary, they're going to be ready, but some of those will go to other schools, and then we'll have some twenty, thirty come in that never probably cracked their book. So, then economic factors, which is a big one, causes issues with absenteeism, behavior, do they have the supports, do they have nutrition? And then, of course, cognitive factors, we're seeing more and more of that, which behavior is a big one, most of my days that I'm spending with discipline is with students that are having those issues. A relative assessment and data overview, of course, we want to start with this, this is great accomplishment for the teachers, the students, the faculty, the staff, former administration, the community, everyone should be proud of, it'll fall up in a level five and a B, especially with those demographics that I mentioned to, this is no small feat, this is a, this is something that should be really shouted from the hills, that they were able to do, it's a bigger feat, and they should be proud of that. Here, I'll go through these charts, it's just, some of those charts, you've seen many of them throughout, this, of course, is past information from Tim Ready, where they're charting in the past, all the way to third grade, each subject, all the way to fifth. Here's third grade breakdown a little bit closer, the three subjects comparable to the district and the state where they're at, you see sometimes we're meeting, sometimes we're exceeding, sometimes we're close to in third grade, fourth grade, again, it's comparable, or at least a B. Here, you know, you see the fifth grade sign sticks out, maybe LA fifth grade. This is that chart that we need to show you, here's an arrow point to a Fall Elementary school, this is, given just the district, it's a great one-stop shop, looking at our sister schools, seeing what else that, you know, we can kind of compare to and where we're at, and of course, it compares down to the county and the state, so, here we Now, this is this year, this is what's going on now in the building. Fall benchmark compared to winter benchmark in our reading, and Mr. Dawson, right, pull down, there's more green, a lot more green and less red, so, and that's when I look at it, I see that, if anyone's supposed to get down to the numbers, I'm like, I'm happy when I see more green, and that's happening. In reading, this is a focus for us this year, is our literacy based on the past. Math, you see, is the same thing, seeing those increases in green from the fall. And I also want to point out something here in the winter, you know, that number that I gave you earlier of twenty-six, almost twenty-seven percent special ed students, many of those students usually are in this red, but you can see of that percentage, twenty-two is in the red, not all special ed, but there's a good chunk of them are. So, that means special ed is moving up, and you want them moving here, because you know you have growth, you want them moving here. I mean, the movement of growth is just as good as anything else, so you want movement. So, they are, from, and if this is, stays true, then we're trending well. Same thing in the math, as you can see with the numbers, that's our special ed's making some difference. Strength programs, strategies, that some have been going on for years, and we'll continue in those, because if something's working, you know, why crash it and start over? I ready platform, of course, everybody uses that, we really dig into that, take advantage of that, it's paid for, so we need to use it, track in progress, the teachers, I'm serious, those teachers just dig right into that information. Using our certified interventionist to target support, big key, allowing high school assistance to support classrooms, those are interventions free up, as those that haven't know that they can use those other people in the classroom where they can. Our PLCs are key, the teachers have their own PLCs, and we have PLCs, and of course, they're all about the data, they're all about what, what are we looking at, which way are we going, do we need to make a change, do we need, what do you need, you know, we're always asking teachers what we need, because administration's there for support, to give them what they need. Response to teaching, we need to react when we see something, not wait, we need to start getting a plan together and to make the progress that we need. Here is area, a school-wide literacy that we, an area of improvement that we looked at and found, and if you just look here and you can see, you know, we've got not as much green, more red, so you've got to figure that, you've got to break that down, you've got to find out what that is, and we're digging into it, instead of just like, okay, we got to have them more read books, no, we got to, we got to find what that is. And we've analyzed that, got a great team together, I mean, you're all, any good leaders, if you want to be a real good leader, you got to surround your people with people smarter than you, and I've done that. So, with the help of our district leaders, I've got a great assistant principal that can dig into that better than anybody I've really seen, and then, just, Jessica Chapman also is our coach to break that down. Root cause analysis of why that may be, digging into that, we've got thirty-nine percent of our students functioning at grade level below in literacy, students are struggling with vocabulary, affecting their comprehension is something I'm sure is kind of universal. Some children may not be developing ready in academic social demands at their grade level, so stuff need to be taken there to change that. Another why, Tennessee State standards, you've got a big jump there at kindergarten, first to second grade, they're going from with guidance to complete independence, that's a big shift for them, big change for them. And based on the data results of these tests, students not being exposed to the tailored complex test, the challenging vocabulary words, and check where students are not developing strategies and skills that empower them to be more independent, and that's what we're certainly trying to change, we're going to transition into that. Smart goal that we have, we aim to improve our literacy proficiency rate by focusing on student skills, that allow them to understand, interpret, analyze written and complex text, which is key. Our goal is to increase the number of students who are on or above grade level literacy to, and we think that's achievable, to achieve that, we're going to monitor students, it's key is monitored from those students to see where they're at, and analyze the, formal and informal assessments daily and weekly, that's a constant thing, it's like, sometimes it's like, oh, we're doing it again, yeah, we're doing it again, we're continuing on. Enhance our students' ability to grapple with complex texts will support our academic assess and proficiency rate, we'll achieve the goal over the next three or four months by tracking student progress, of course, that's our whole goal over the next three or four months, getting ready for ten ready, and then we'll know for sure. Our problem with that is we'll know from one test where we had like our benchmarks, and, you know, we think it's going to work out, you never know until you really get there, right? And how we try to monitor that success through our PLCs, we have a very strong PLC system that was, again, already there, I've just continued that, using the I ready and using it correctly, that's key, not just, you know, open it up and, you know, look at some numbers, actually looking at that program that we have, that gives us tremendous amount of data that we can use. Individual conference and coaching, academic support, it's big, and any building that I'm in especially, it's already been there, fortunately, having, already having a previous coach who already knew the school, knew the program, staying there has really helped, and we're all three leadership team really focused on getting in the classrooms, finding out what teachers need through those PLCs, what do you need for support, whatever support that is. Sometimes that support is accountability, as you know, because I believe that that is a big part of support, is helping people accountable, but some of it is, what tools do you need, let's get it. If we can't get it, I talk to Ms. Lori, what can we do, and she'll find it in a box in a cell or somewhere, so we'll figure it out. Our TDI, of course, probably is monitored, you know, depends on if we do that weekly, every two weeks, depend on what it's at, or what student's tier is in, and using that, I'm just taking the test and then, okay, wait for the next test, are they making gains, and where are we seeing those improvements at, or where are we seeing the deficiencies at, what moves we need to make. Separations opportunities, and I've brought in, I'm big on culture, I know, you know, before you can have anything in academics and improvements, you have to have a strong culture in school climate. Students, you want, you want them to be there as much as you can, have students want to be in school, our students want to be there, they're happy to be there, I've seen it, I saw it previously, a previous school, I started, they, it seemed to happen, but they seemed very, very happy, it's something I pushed into the teachers, we want the schools, the teachers to be here, we serve, or students to be here, we serve them, we serve the parents, but also the school, the teachers, I want them to be there, I want them to want to be there, I want, I want to keep our good teachers, and I want to probably recruit some of your awes. I'm not here about Chad from the company, or I've heard about the door, Chad was there in the fall, they're coming, they don't have to drive up the mountain to the board, so a little bit. But we can do a lot of things community-wise, bringing that in, that's them not, them not, I don't know if you've ever seen many people in a building that a basketball wasn't being bounced, I thought, what in the world, are we giving only free?